Uh, sec-
Sorry about that.
No problem. Roll call.
Director Diana Mayer?
I.
Director Matt Sampson?
Yes.
Director Jed Smith?
I believe I was there. Yeah. I don't think I was there, was I?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just Director Kush and then Director Russell in attendance.
So, yeah.
We can still vote to approve them in a minute.
That's correct, or the committee can just deem them accepted as they are if there are no additional comments. Either way.
Vice Chair Kush?
I accept it as they are. No additional comments. Thank you.
And Chair Russell?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, capital improvement program, Marin City Phase Two Pipeline Replacement Project.
Good morning, Chair Russell, Board members. Alex and I, Engineering Director. This morning with me is Hagar Nagash, our Assistant Engineer and Design, who will be presenting this item. She'll be presenting the second phase of the Marin City project that's been going on for the past year, and this will finalize that step. And when it's complete, it would have installed approximately 20,000 feet of new welded steel pipe in the community. So with that, I don't want to steal any more of your thunder. Go for it.
Okay. Good morning, Directors. I am Hagar Nagash, Assistant Engineer and Design. This morning, I'm here to present the Marin City Phase Two Pipeline Replacement Project. This project is located along Park Circle, Downhill Street, Bay Vista Circle, Bucklou Street, Bronk Court, Burgess Court, and Bay Vista Court, all within Marin City. The project will install approximately 10,440 feet of 16-inch, 8-inch, 6-inch, and 4-inch pipes, along with all the appurtenances to replace the old and leak-prone piping, installed as early as 1961, as part of the district's capital improvement program. The engineer's estimate for this project is $5,375,000 and is scheduled to last 280 days, with a completion date of July 28, 2026. The project is largely funded through a $6.4 million grant, which was awarded by the California Department of Water Resources. The remainder of the project will be funded through Marin Water Capital Fund. The district will receive an open bid to this project on September 30th. If bid documents are acceptable, staff will make a recommendation at a future regularly scheduled board meeting for contract award. District staff recommends review and comment for the project approval and contract award for this item at a future regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question. In terms of the planning piece, how's it looking for the traffic flow with the impacts to all the roadwork being done?
It's, the first phase actually went fairly well. The contractor did a really good job communicating ahead of time and managing the the traffic impacts. And the roads out there are fairly wide. So that should be very minimal impact to traffic. Not say there won't be, but you know, it's going to be well underhand.
Excellent. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thanks a lot, Hager, for the update. Just a quick question on budgeting and the engineer's estimate. Are we, are, are we seeing pretty stable prices now for pipeline replacements? You know, for a while, we saw an escalation of prices. How are things looking now?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, Director Kush. We have seen over the past couple of pipeline projects we've opened up, very competitive bids and quite a few of them. So last, for instance, the last canal project we opened up, we had nine bids. A couple from really large contractor firms, and they're actually, they were very, very close in price and right around the engineer's estimate. So we're actually seeing pretty stable bids at this point. So we'll see what we receive on this project, since it's a fairly large pipeline project as well.
Right. Yeah, we'll see how long this stability lasts, I guess.
Right.
Thanks.
Right.
Diana?
Nothing. Thank you.
Any comments on community outreach relations and, and response? I know I've had some inquiries from the county to make sure that we're in touch, and how's that going? Any pushback?
Yeah, we've been keeping with our community outreach plan for the second phase of the project, as we did with the first one, and we sent out project notification letters, and I believe maybe Adrian might have any additional comment on the outreach?
Yeah, we've been working closely with Marin City Climate Resilience on the project. They did help with all of the pre-construction outreach for Phase One, and the same plans are in place for Phase Two. Towards the end of Phase One, we actually did host a group of youth up on the watershed to do a tour and kind of go through the steps of water's journey to help them with understanding where their water comes from, how it travels to their community, so they can take that message back and share it with other community members at outreach events they host.
Great. And the timeline for the next phase of the project, is that clearly updated on our website, or how are people going to find out exactly when things are going to happen next?
Yes.
So we have a direct mailer planned to go out in about a month. And we'll also be doing door hangers to all residents and businesses in the impacted area as well. And it is posted on the website, too.
Great.
I was surprised it went up to 16-inch.
At some of the connection points down towards the bottom, that's, it's not a large stretch of the 16-inch, it's just where the connection's going to happen.
And what are we hooking into on either end of the 16?
Welded steel.
So it's going with what it has?
Correct.
And this piece is just for putting a T in, basically?
I've-
Yeah, it's basic, it's basically to put a T in and change the valves over there. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Any public comment?
There are none.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. 2025 School Education Program Refresh.
Good morning, Directors. Paul Selye, Water Resources Director. The school ed refresh Christina will be presenting. Christina Montano, our Supervisor in Water Efficiency, will be presenting today. And I could make a few cracks about education, but I, I'll resist since they're usually pretty bad, but yeah. I think, you know, as you'll hear today, this is a really comprehensive review of our education program. It's been some time since we took a look at it. And I'll, I'll let Christina share the details.
Hi, Board. I'm Christina Montano, Supervisor in Water Efficiency. And like Paul mentioned, today I'll be walking you through the recent update we did on our school education program. So the presentation will cover some background on our school education program, so we're all familiar. And then what we wanted to accomplish with this 2025 update. So that was some curriculum additions and build-outs. We wanted to offer some new program, some new program offerings, and then program repackaging and refreshed marketing initiatives. And after we talk about all of that, we'll wrap up with next steps, now that all the work on this has been completed. So just for a quick why on all of this, this slide comes up in a lot of our water efficiency presentations. Our activities are of course guided by our Water Efficiency Master Plan, and these five strategies, and one big piece is refining our outreach and water education efforts. So some background on our school education program. We've been doing this since 2009. The program was developed by district staff, and the target audience is grades three through five, also high school students, but the primary focus is on elementary age kids. And the program consists of three main elements. So we have in-classroom presentations, and then we have field trips to Lake Lagunitas. And these two things are designed to go hand in hand. And then we have a third component, and that's assemblies done by an outside consultant. They're called Zoom Zoom. The reach of classroom presentations and field trips is about 500 kids annually. With Zoom Zoom, they're doing school-wide assemblies, so they're often reaching several hundred students for each performance, which is so great.
Did you say Zoom Zoom?
Zoom Zoom.
Zoom Zoom.
Yeah. More on that later. Classroom presentations. So these are meant to help kids learn about basic, but obviously really important ideas around water. They're PowerPoint presentations, but they're also discussion-based. And some of the topics we cover are how do we use water? And then our water's journey, where it comes from, how it gets, how it gets to them. Why should we save water? How to save it? And then the role of Marin Water and all of these things. And why is there a milk jug on this slide? Well, that's just one way we get kids thinking about how we measure and talk about water. We have them picture a gallon jug of milk or juice. Some other topics we cover in our classroom presentations, water production, drought, the relationship between water and energy. And presentations really set the stage in theory, and on paper, if you will. And they're kind of laying the groundwork for the next part, which are the field trips, and those are the more immersive, experiential portion of our program. So field trips to Lake Lagunitas, we call them water walks. We take out one class at a time, up to 30 students. We hike part, partway around the lake, and we have dedicated talking points and discussions along the way. And this is where kids are really establishing that connection to their water supply. They're seeing in person, it's beautiful, what we teach around their water's journey and the water that we're all sharing. This is where kids can see all of that themselves, and kind of like envision how it all comes together. We also use these great interactive dry erase journals, and those just help kids stay engaged with what they're learning. So again, the goal of the field trips is to just make the lessons that we're teaching kids on water real, and again, establishing that connection with their water supply, this appreciation for what we have available to us locally. And this is hopefully, you know, creating kids who go on to be really thoughtful adults, thoughtful about how they use water. So it's a great, it's a great element of our program. And then Zoom Zoom, the last piece of our school education program. If you haven't heard of this group, they're fantastic. So they use movements and music to educate kids on water. So kids are moving around, they're laughing, they're dancing, they're repeating the songs. If you're supportive of the philosophy, like I am, that kids learn best through play, this is that. We've worked with them since 2009. They do assemblies for us at our local elementary schools, up to 20 performances every year. All 20 slots always get filled. It's a really popular program. And it's just another way we've found to be valuable in getting kids to think about water. And then in 2023, recognizing that relationship between water and energy, we also began partnering with Marin Clean Energy. And they're excited that these assemblies can also can convey messaging around energy for them. And then, moving on to program updates. So some of the changes that we're making with this upcoming school year. So the goal every time we do these updates, of course, is to grow our program and strive to make it better. And we really wanted to ask ourselves, how can we better support our educational partners in all of this, which is our teachers? So we wanted to, first of all, align our program with new educational developments, and that's next-generation science standards. So these are standards set by the state of California for what students should be learning at each grade level. We also wanted to offer training opportunity for teachers. And then, related to NGSS, we wanted to create distinguished themes for each grade level that would really differentiate them from one another. And then also have these themes relate back to water efficiency. And we'll see one of those in some upcoming slides. And then finally, we also wanted to increase our outreach around the program. So we developed the mailer that you have copies of. And we also wanted to link to some of our other really great existing related programs the district offers, like our volunteer program. So here's an overview of the themes we've incorporated into our current water walks. So these are in addition to all of our regular core teaching on, you know, where our water comes from, how it gets to kids, and why it's important to save it. We're now weaving in relevant concepts that kids are learning about throughout the regular school year. And this is just a closer look at one of the curriculum additions. So one idea fourth graders are learning about throughout the school year, adaptations. And this was such a great, relevant theme for us to incorporate into our water walks. There's so much biodiversity at Lake Lagunitas, obviously, so it was a great opportunity to discuss that. And fourth graders will focus mostly on oak trees as they're learning about adaptations on the watershed. So we're getting them to think, well, what features do oak trees have that allow them to thrive on our watershed? And then tying this back into water efficiency, how do native plants like oak trees help us save water? So we're encouraging them to think about, you know, planting native plants in their gardens, where we don't have to do much to support these plants, and how that might compare to other plants like grass that, you know, obviously use a lot of water. And then getting into some of our new program offerings. We'll now be offering a high school video contest. So high school students will submit short, one-minute videos created around an annual theme. The theme that we picked for this upcoming school year is Your Water's Journey. Students can win cash prizes, and then we'll formally, formally recognize winners at a board meeting. And then these videos that we receive can be used as a unique promotional material or opportunity for the district, which is cool. And then another new opportunity or addition to our program is going to be teacher trainings. And these will be in partnership with Project Wet and DWR's new climate team. Project Wet stands for Water Education Today. So they're a well-known educational resource provider. And this is just an opportunity for our teachers to learn about and understand climate impacts on our local water supply. And then they'll get activities that, that they can bring back to their students in their classrooms. It's great. DWR and Project Wet, they provide all the materials and resources, and we just get to act as a coordinator, a host, and kind of like a connector between these two things. So teachers and this opportunity. And then finally, again, we worked with Adrienne to develop this wonderful new marketing brochure, highlighting the changes we've made to our program and our new offerings. And again, it also highlights other really great related Marin Water programs, like the volunteer program on the watershed. And then it just points out some opportunities for students and teachers and their families to stay connected with Marin Water, kind of on a year-round, ongoing basis, and not just for these one-time presentations and field trips. Final slide, next steps. So we sent out this mailer to our local elementary school, local elementary schools a few weeks ago. We've already gotten requests from a couple of new schools that we haven't worked, worked with in the past. We plan to get teacher feedback to assess these new refinements that we've made to the program. And then, like with any other program that we have in water efficiency, we'll of course track participation. We're definitely anticipating an increase in activity after these changes have been made, and we've had these, this new push with marketing. And then we'll award a high school video contest winner at a board meeting in May of 2026.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the Zoom Zoom effort. My kids are still singing the song, so yeah, well done. Appreciate it all around.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at their website. It says this highly acclaimed group has performed in 14 countries throughout the Americas and appeared on regional and international radio and television.
Yeah, I always say, it takes a special type of person to get up there in front of kids and, and make them laugh, and just engage with them in that way. So I really like that program for that element.
Really amazing. It also looks like it's free, and they get the way that they're funded is through partnerships like with Sonoma Water, for example. I don't know if we've, we support them at all, but that-
We do. So we usually do two-year contracts with them.
Got it.
Yeah.
Just a note that I would love to come to some of these things, like maybe do the field trip sometime. I'm just curious, do we, does it ever rotate? Is it always to Lake Lagunitas? And is that just because it's such a pretty site, or why, why do we choose that?
About other places, Lake Lagunitas, yeah, it's beautiful. We, it's flat, yeah, it's easy hike.
Yeah.
And then we have certain talking points that are specific to Lake Lagunitas. So we've just always kept it there.
Yeah. Great. Well, really impressive. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Christina. Really, really good to see this effort. I know, I think it, it works, because occasionally I get outreach from high school students that are writing reports or something, and I've found if you respond to one, then the rest of the class follows up with exactly the same message. So they're good at that. You know, the fourth grade walk around Lake Lagunitas one year, I think this was probably five, six years ago, resulted in some new crossing signs.
Oh, yeah.
Those are, those are those are nice, kind of just recognition of the fact that kids are learning about the environment through this effort.
Agreed. I love those. Such a nice touch. I think those were done by a school in Fairfax.
It was Brookside Elementary School in San Anselmo. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't want the whole watershed covered with those signs, I think. But it's a pretty nice recognition of this effort. Great to see. Thanks for the updates and super good mailer. Adrian, really nice. This is great.
Echoing the comments of appreciation. How, how many schools are actually taking kids up on the watershed for your hikes in terms of elementary schools in Marin? Is it all of them?
It's not. I would say we engage with only about 25% of all of the elementary schools. So that's public and private.
Okay.
So I'll be curious to see with this new mailer if we'll be able to push that number up.
Yeah. And how's the capacity for staff to support higher numbers percentage-wise?
I know. We have more staff currently than we have in prior years. And we do have the ability, if fall is, things are really stacking up, because it's also our busy season for site visits and our, our cap visits. We can kind of push schools and teachers off to the springtime when it's not as busy for us doing site work.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I just, the reason I ask is it, it's so, it's, it's hard to put a value on getting someone out on the watershed. You know, because once you actually get up there, it changes someone's perspective and understanding where it comes from. And you know, we're at a point right now where there's actually, you know, movement to exclude folks from the watershed based on how they choose to recreate. So the more we can get people in and actually experiencing it, the more I guess stewards will have later on, understanding how important it is and why all this effort's going into it. So very important. The other comment I'd make is next month, we should be getting a look at reimagining the Sky Oaks area ranger station. And I think a critical component going to be is a educational center. So any type of infrastructure comments, thoughts you would have that would be, that would help you with your tours out there, I think is going to be important to comment onto that. Thank you.
We still bus them?
We have that available, but most often it's parent drivers.
And is it the same schools every year?
It often is. Teachers, we just got a comment this morning. A teacher wrote in and said, we did a vote, this is our kids' favorite field trip, so it's something that they're booking every year, because they've done it in the past. They really like it. So it is a lot of the same schools.
Could we service all of them if we could? If they were interested?
Yeah, there's about 55. And we do about 20 field trips currently, kind of clustered into the fall and spring. So it'd essentially be double that. Double would be tough.
Why do you cap at 30?
Just because when you're out up on the trails, you know, it's easier to manage a, a group that's no larger than 30. And also for the speakers, you know, the kids kind of have to move in tight together, and, and larger than 30, it's just, it's harder for people to hear.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It seems to me we should press on the schools that haven't come.
Yeah.
You know, maybe like distribute that letter to them of what that teacher thought. And if she's willing or he's willing to comment on that, you could perhaps would have been in touch with that teacher.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I guess, how many more. Probably double.
Probably double, yeah.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Public comment?
Yes, we have a couple. Phil Sauter and Larry Minikis.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for all that you do to reach out to these future customers. They're also present-day influencers who can reach their parents directly with what they've learned. I think it's terrific that the educational outreach begins on the watershed, where students can learn how lucky we are to have such a healthy watershed that captures clean rainwater that flows through a clean environment and distribution system. They can take pride from, that the water from their faucets can compete directly with bottled water that comes from the store. I was also impressed to see the breakout of, of leaks as a major share of water use. It's right up there with flushing, showering, clothes washing, and water coming out of the faucet. I haven't seen leaks presented in that context before, and it makes a real impression. The one thing I was surprised to see not covered in the materials we looked at today is any mention of water use outdoors. Not only is it 40 to 50% of our total residential use, but it also has the greatest potential for saving our fresh water for drinking, cooking, showering, and cleaning. I think our recent segmentation of super users showed that the most significant waste of drinking water, and the biggest opportunity for saving it is to stop wasting it on landscaping. I don't know that all age groups are ready for a primer on recycled water, but they can sure understand that a large green lawn can use more water than any of the indoor uses of water they experience every day. I won't seriously suggest splitting the $5 a square foot for lawn replacement between the parents and the kids, but it did cross my mind. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, and thanks for the presentation. You know, when I was in elementary school, one of the things I still remember is the, going to the Borden Dairy and seeing how milk was bottled. And I see that part of slide five was our water's journey, and it had a little piece of water treatment there. It may not be practical to take students to a water treatment plant, sure would be interesting, but it would be good to have a video included that really shows not just where our water comes from, but how it's processed and how it becomes drinking water. And that's all I wanted to add to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Good thought.
There are no further speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Recycled water system update, timely. The devil laptop.
Yeah. Before we figure out technology, we do have a recycled water update for you. We'll get to momentarily.
We're just commenting on whether it's, you're going to that guy. He's got a mind of his own.
I will resist commenting. I think there would be broad support. Just generally, and I'm sure we're looking into it. Okay. So again, Paul Selye, Water Resources Director. I am joined by Nicholas Bussi, our Assistant Water Resources Specialist. And our presentation sort of has two parts today. The first component is a bit of a primer. We'll go back over recycled water and in our service area and kind of a somewhat detailed review of recycled water option, opportunities at the district that we've looked at in the past. And then Nick will take a look at sort of the Arena Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers that we've all heard so much about new construction that's going to be going up in our service area and how those may fit in with recycled water going forward. So without further ado, we've, and Chair Russell will, will remember all of these just about reports, but there are a, a number of looks that we've taken at recycled water over the years. And there isn't a huge amount of time gaps between those looks. So we, we're either doing it all wrong, where we kind of understand our service area and what the opportunities are. And that's where I would prefer to go with it. Many of these efforts, we kind of gloss over, but in, in order to build the system that we have today delivering recycled water, we had to be, the prior staff, I should say, the district had to be very creative in generating those demands. Traditional uses for purple pipe for recycled water is irrigation. But in order to drive demand, there's only- there's only, there's only so many playing fields in Marin County. And so we need to develop unique uses that were not yet approved at the time. Things like commercial laundries was not approved. So staff would have had to work directly with the regulators in order to get that approved. Commercial car washes were not approved. It's sort of de rigueur today to have a car wash using recycled water, but it wasn't always the case. Some of the first cooling towers were here in Marin County. That was not right. There was a lot of fear around the quality of water being used in cooling towers. And I could go on. There were just a number of things that we sort of had to advance in order to get to the use that we have today. And we'll get into some of the barriers that we find for recycled water expansions. So first, just to step back, what do we mean when we talk about recycled water? This is essentially treated water, wastewater that is safe to use for irrigation or indoor uses like toilet flushing. There are a lot of other definitions around the quality of this that is driven by the states. These are sort of technical requirements for the water, how long, how much chlorine, what the chlorine contact time is, the turbidities, all sorts of things. But essentially, this is water that is highly treated wastewater that we can use for irrigation and toilet flushing would be kind of primary uses. And then we hear a lot in the news today about things like direct potable reuse and indirect potable reuse. And I know many of you are familiar with these terms. And there are very technical definitions of what these terms mean. But essentially, this is again, instead of highly treated, we're going to call it advanced treated, just reflecting that just about every known treatment technique and disinfection protocol is applied to this wastewater before it can be used and treated to drinking water quality standards. So then, looking at an example of recycled water, Purple Pipe, we're going to distinguish sort of irrigation and toilet flushing from direct potable and indirect potable by calling it Purple Pipe. The sort of classic project in our service area is a pipeline to Peacock Gap Golf Course. And you can see on the inset map here, every project sort of starts with alternatives. And you try to expand those alternatives. And you'll see here, there's a blue line that goes out into the bay. And you may wonder, well, why on earth would anybody think putting a pipe in the bay would be cheaper than going down the roadway? And turns out it wasn't, but it was worth looking at because there are a lot of environmental regulations along North San Pedro Road, particularly that section of road bisects the bay and the tidal zone in the bay. And so we had interest from NGOs and others to raise the roadway so that the bay would have a free flow of water, tidal water there. So tremendous cost in going down that sort of coastal route. So neither of those two options appeared to work for us. So the orange line that sort of goes to the south through San Rafael was the sort of winning route, if you like. But even that-
And mentioned the Native American burial ground.
Yeah. There are a lot of challenges on the coastal routes. But even that route, when, you know, the orange line, you can see it has sort of a yellow section. So hey, what if we took a little detour into downtown San Rafael? So there's just alternatives on alternatives. And that's not untypical when you come with this stuff. So we do try to turn over as many rocks as we can to make these projects work. With every sort of detour and additional pipe length, you get a little bit more water out of it. And you can see here, so the cost for Peacock Gap right now is about 28, is it 20? Yeah, 28 million and a couple hundred, maybe near 300 acre feet of water.
Of course, that has been for a long time.
Yeah. Yes.
I think it probably would be wise to distribute that map, the one that shows the nine areas for reclaimed water.
The, the master plan from 2000 that has the 21 different routes or phases. Yeah.
The question I asked first day I was on the board was, there's one of those done. Today, there's still one of those done of nine. There are political problems. I'm surprised San Rafael hasn't kicked about this one, or have they not heard about it yet?
Haven't heard about it yet.
Yeah.
So we're just, these are just planning level. These are just planning level estimates. And you can imagine there would be challenges in downtown San Rafael if we were putting in that amount of pipe. But it would, you know, be something that we'd have to work through. So after Purple Pipe, right, we were talking about another form of recycled water, the indirect potable reuse. And this is the advanced treated water that is typically put into some kind of, it doesn't go into direct drinking water use. It goes into some form of environmental barrier. And that could be a reservoir. And in that reservoir, there'll be a detention time, I think a minimum of six months would be required, or groundwater. And of course, we're quite familiar with groundwater examples down in LA where they're pumping highly treated recycled water into the groundwater to form a barrier against salinity intrusion into the drinking water supply down there.
San Diego is working on right, one right now for 30 days.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah. And in those cases, they start to increase the level of and frequency of monitoring and how quickly they can control the release of water in case you get some sort of off spec water that goes out. So-
And the issue of short circuiting inside of that size reservoir.
Lots of challenges, for sure. So that, this is, this is sort of an example of what these are. And in, in the strategic water supply assessment, we did look at a version of this in Marin where we sort of centralized, we tried to collect all of the wastewater from sort of the main treatment facilities to a central location, and then move that water up to Kent Reservoir, which is our biggest reservoir. It's going to have a sufficient amount of detention time for us. And you can see how the numbers sort of pencil out there. It's just that there's a lot of piping associated with this option. And we know piping is anywhere from, you know, 3 million to 5 million a mile. And then the volume of water, you can see there about seven MGD or 7.8 thousand acre feet per year.
Plus pumping.
Huge pumps, yeah.
And we're down in flats and they're up in the hill.
Yeah. I can't remember the number, maybe 4,000 horsepower worth of pumping to get that thing up the hill to Kent.
Sorry, Paul, you're not referencing here the cost per dry year and acre feet. I mean, that, that expense, so it includes all the infrastructure, the pumping.
Yeah.
But the other big challenge is that these treatment plants, as far as I understand, these treatment, they require continual operation.
Yes.
You cannot turn them on when you need them and then turn them off when you don't need them. So presumably that cost of running them, even when we're not using the water, is then included in the dry year cost.
It is. I think that asterisk is, we probably should have deleted that asterisk statement from the slide set. So the 16,000, I think, includes the total cost. And if you recall, to set that in comparison to the Amispheric River Capture Project, that's around 5,800 dry year cost. So we're on an order of three times what that is.
Yeah, I've heard Ben say until, you know, picker plants for water in the same way that, you know, our electricity providers now use picker plants to meet high demand periods. I would say until we have those as viable options for advanced treatment, these are going to be difficult, different, difficult projects implement in areas with intermittent shortages. They make a lot of sense probably in areas with chronic shortage, right? There's a big difference there.
That's right. So then taking a look, so we've seen an example of IPR projects in Marin. This is IPR in California. So the first one up there is notable, and many of us may remember its origins as Water Factory 21 back in 1976. And then that was essentially treating polluted river discharge water and just putting it back in the river so it'd go out to the ocean. And some bright spark said, well, hey, why don't we stick this in the groundwater basin? And maybe it'll stop the saltwater intrusion. And they've been doing that. They did that for many, many years, just to collect information on it to sort of be able to confidently tell the public and get the public used to that concept of putting that water in the ground. And they've been doing it ever since 1976, essentially. With a recent upgrade, it's now called the Groundwater Replenishment System. And I think they're, they're looking at expanding that up to 130 million gallons a day. It's probably one of our longest standing, large recycled water projects of a, you know, for groundwater replenishment.
And if you remember that one, they kind of skirted over the issue of where the water went.
Yeah.
They built this barrier between the saltwater and the freshwater because of the ocean. And then they had a problem with NDMA, which is a disinfection byproduct, that showed up in a bunch of Mesa Consolidated wells. And then people began to question what was happening. And at that point, they disclosed that 90%, 9-0% of the water flows to the inland side, to the wells, and 10% goes to the ocean. So they found out they were basically directly recycling in the ground. So it got a little complicated in the, Mesa Consolidated is the John Wayne Airport water supply.
Yeah.
Things in perspective where this all is.
Yeah. But a very competent organization, and I think they're doing a great job with a very challenging project. San Diego Pure Water Project is another. Just draw your attention over to the cost side of the equation here. That's a one to one and a half billion with a B kind of project. And then even the Silicon Valley, this is Santa Clara Valley Waters, which has a advanced water treatment plant right now that produces about eight MGD or 9,000 acre feet or so a year of recycled water for irrigation uses and indoor plumbing and things like that. They want to expand that capacity. And again, they're thinking that's on the order of a billion dollars to do that. The other thing I would note about some of these projects is that their timeframe for implementation, everyone seems to talk like the implementation is tomorrow, but they're, they're working on that basis, apparently, yet the, the sort of go live dates are 2040 and beyond. So there, there are fair ways out there before some of these show up. And then the most recently, and we have another slide on it, is the Pure Water Solutions, Pure Water Southern California. So this is the metropolitan kind of partnership with LADWP. It's a huge project that we're going to hear a lot about in the news and in the water news coming up. So I just wanted to share this with you. You have this information if you need it. And at its build out, I understand it's going to be 150 million gallons a day. And they're looking at 60 miles worth of pipeline through LA area. And it's going to be a huge accomplishment if they can, if they can get this to go. So in terms of direct potable reuse, there are again, a couple different flavors of this. One is raw water augmentation, which would be again, treating water to potable standards through, right? And then putting it in a reservoir. When you might say, well, how is that different than the indirect potable reuse you just talked about? Well, this time you could put it into a reservoir that doesn't have the six month, which Chair Russell was talking about. You could put it into a reservoir that may have a shorter residence time. And in some cases, they're looking potentially at treated water augmentation, at least conceptually. This is going straight into the pipes from the treatment plant. In Marin, again, we took a look at this. This was our DPR, which was trying to collect effluent from Los Colinas and CMSA, and moving that water up to, to one of our reservoirs. And the cost you can see in the 460 million range. Again, this was high level planning estimates from Strategic Water Supply Assessment. So we'd expect these numbers might change if we took a closer look at it. Again, the yield is similar to the indirect potable reuse. It's very similar to the indirect potable reuse project, just maybe with a slightly less pipe. And then for treated water augmentation, we did a study with CMSA to look at what that might, might, might look like. And I think there was a couple of different sized plants out of CMSA, a two MGD and a four MGD. And we looked at and considered what that might look like. And you can see the list of what the treatment facilities look like there, in order to, to meet the, the level of treatment that would pass muster with the regulations.
Might point out that one of the problems with CSMA is the saltwater infiltration.
Yeah.
Which drives their salt levels up. They're about double the level of Los Colinas, maybe triple.
Yeah.
The TDS, the total dissolved solids.
Yeah.
Because they have so much infiltration in their header lines.
Yeah. And we have, obviously reverse osmosis would be included in this anyway, but it, what, what the salt does to water is it reduces the yield. So you need more membranes in order to produce the same amount of water, more energy, more cost, more chemicals, et cetera, et cetera.
And it increases the salinity of the reject.
Yep.
So that was really the problem that our DSal had, as I recall, was getting rid of the water. That was the touchy part. It was, even though it's injecting back into the bay, which is already salty, it's really salty.
Yeah. There are a lot of challenges with, with DSal, for sure.
Including the board.
So that was a conceptual example, right, of a way we might employ DPR, direct potable reuse in California. So what does that look like in California? Well, there aren't any. So let's cast a broader net. Let's go nationwide. Let's go worldwide and look at, at these options here. Texas, there is an outfit there in Texas that's been producing water and it essentially goes to the inlet of their treatment plant. And this was born out of a time when they ran out of source water for their treatment plant. So at one point, their treatment plant was receiving almost exclusively DPR water as a source. And then maybe the most famous example that's often quoted at different conferences and so on is the Namibia Windhook, that's been in operation since the 60s. And again, there, I think a point was made earlier by Director Kush, that, you know, where needs must, these, these options make sense. So in Namibia, there is no water to drink other than this source water. And they've, they've been making the most out of that for quite some time. And then we talked to earlier, San Diego Pure Water Project is looking at, you know, both the IPR surface water augmentation and DPR raw water augmentation for their treatment plant. Okay, so that's sort of the background, summary of recycled water in our service area. And I'll hand it over to Nick, who's going to talk to us a little bit about the maybe future of recycled water in the service area.
Hi, good morning. Nick Bussey, Water Resources Specialist. So I wanted to start by thinking back to April. We gave a board update with some important recycled water information at the time, kind of about existing capacity and some of the existing demands that were being projected. So to recap that, we have a dry season capacity of about 1,000 acre feet and a annual demand currently in the system of 700 acre feet. And since April, we've been working on looking at a deeper, detailed investigation of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment to further refine and develop our estimates for projected demands.
Nick, excuse me, do we dial down production in the wet season? So when you reference dry season capacity, is that, does that mean this is primarily being operated in the dry season?
So it's a great question. And really, it's, so there's, there's these two pieces. There's dry season capacity, and then there's annual demand. And those are two slightly different variables. And what we see is the, the treatment capacity of the plant is constant year round, but that full capacity is not used year round. It's kind of, it peaks in the dry season. So that's really the constraining piece of the capacity portion. So those are the kind of the two pieces here.
So there, so there may, there may be periods in the dry season where demand exceeds what we're able to supply. But if you average demand out, it comes out to about 700 acre feet per year.
So we, yeah, currently we don't exceed.
Okay.
But you could, if you, you know, as you'll see later, we start to approach that 1,000 acre foot dry season capacity. The peak is driven by irrigation, right? That's recycled water's predominant use is irrigation. So when we're looking at capacity issues, we want to make sure we can address any new irrigation. Peacock Gap Golf Course comes to mind. And of course, toilet flushing adds to all of that. And a lot of what's being discussed here today will be around both irrigation and indoor uses as part of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Just maybe one last point. And indoor use right now is restricted to multi-unit buildings and maybe some commercial buildings.
Yes.
The 1,000 acre foot dry season capacity, is that the plant's capacity?
The thousand acre foot dry season capacity, is that the plant's capacity or is that what we're obligated to take? Or we have the right, it's the right to take?
Right. It's it's around how much we've the right to take.
Okay. Do you know just off the hand what the actual capacity of the plant is?
Yeah, we had this discussion with with Los Galinas, and they're pretty confident at around four million gallons a day. In terms of the the plant capacity, the district has purchased, I think, two point two five million gallons per day of capacity, which is more than adequate for our uses at this point in time. You also have to evaluate the source of recycle of of how much wastewater there is. And so the dry water, dry dry season wastewater is about two to three MGD. But of course, Los Galinas have a lot of pond storage. So your your daily production of wastewater plus your pond storage will give you a a number that you can reasonably rely on in terms of capacity for recycled water.
The rest of their capacity is going north. Is that fair to say?
I don't know if they use all of their capacity at this time.
Okay, so I guess then the question would be at at some point, do we have the ability to get more capacity based on what we're going to talk about with the housing component of this?
Potentially, yes.
So here's a deeper dive on the projected housing growth and demand for the recycled water system in the Terre Linda area. So it's a lot of information on this slide. So I'll start by walking you through the table here. The first column is site type, and really there's three main types of sites. There's current customers, there's infill, which are housing growth that would be adjacent to or next to an existing recycled water main. And then there's recycled water projects, which would require a pipeline extension. So a good example of infill would be Northgate Town Center. It doesn't require any capital investment from the district to connect to. And then Lucas Valley, there's some housing growth that's projected in Lucas Valley, but it's about a mile away from the existing system. So that's kind of a good example of a pipeline extension. And then the the final row here is just a sum of all the rows above it. So moving on to column two, those are new housing units, which kind of by definition don't apply to the current customers. So we found that there's two thousand forty-five housing units proposed as infill in the existing Terre Linda area and eight hundred and eighty-eight for recycled water projects for a total of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three new housing units in the vicinity of the existing system. Moving over to demand, the current system has a demand of about seven hundred acre feet. The infill would require ninety-four acre feet. All of the projects, if they were to be constructed, would represent fifty-six acre feet and a total demand of eight hundred and fifty acre feet.
So that number of infill development seems low.
Well, this is only adjacent to the existing recycled water system. So you're essentially fronting a main. We've got some other numbers to add to this, but.
Okay, even the Northgate project alone is how many units?
I'm going to say it was like eleven hundred.
I think it's eleven hundred ish.
Okay, I thought it was a little bit higher than that, but okay.
Yep.
And maybe to clarify that, there's two phases to Northgate. Only phase one is part of the regional housing needs assessment, and that goes through twenty forty. So maybe the the second phase is separate. To move through the the final three, the pipeline extension, district capital cost, and then cost per dry year acre feet. Those only really apply to the pipeline extension site type. So we found that there'd be about three miles of pipeline extensions required to connect to all the kind of surrounding vicinity of projects, which would represent nine to fifteen million of district capital costs and a cost per dry year acre foot of eleven, eleven thousand seven hundred to nineteen thousand four hundred.
That next, Nick, so a number that I have in my head is about a million dollars a mile for pipeline replacement. That's.
Yeah, three. Three to five is what we're.
Three to five, and that's consistent across all of our pipeline projects now. Or is this is this maybe higher because it's new pipeline?
This is consistent with what I think believe engineering are finding in terms of three million a mile, which doesn't include the purchase cost of the pipe. So we've tried to bundle in the purchase cost of materials and then balance that with what we're seeing on other planning level projects like ARC, like if you recall the Nacasio pipeline from Sula Huli to Nacasio, which is two or three miles, and it's up in the twenty-five million dollar range.
That I mean, that was crazy.
So, well, you look at ARC, and it's it's not too far behind in terms of cost per mile. So we're trying to balance, these are estimates.
Okay, but but you're the number even for our pipeline maintenance replace, you know, the regular replacement cycle, the number I should have in my head now is about three million dollars per mile.
That's correct.
And to kind of just summarize this as well, the demand shown here in the the vicinity of the existing system are within the current capacity of the treatment plant.
And keep in mind, just to put things in perspective, the new number from Sonoma Water is what thirteen hundred or something an acre foot?
Oh, seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty.
Yeah.
Against eight nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
That this is one of the problems with slowed down reclaimed water.
Exactly.
Is partly regulations and partly the infrastructure, the building the pipelines.
Right.
Okay, so we found that there was some still capacity within the existing treatment system. So we looked, we also wanted to look at expanding the system to downtown Centerfell. I'll start with a map here to just kind of give an overview if if you can see it here.
Buy him Nick a bulletproof vest yet?
Say that again?
I said that they buy you a bulletproof vest yet.
Yeah.
Talking December.
Yeah, they haven't seen this. So the the concept we were showing here is a connection to the existing system via Lincoln Avenue. It would connect to Marydale Road, which is near Civic Center. And then it would branch off of Lincoln, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth Street, and and some of the side streets as well. So that, and that captures almost all of the the housing growth for that's projected for downtown Centerfell. So we have a new site type here in the table. It's for the expansion to downtown Centerfell. And then the the summary row on the bottom captures the previous table for Terre Linda as well as the the new site type. So the housing units, if you look at at Rena for downtown Centerfell, are about twenty-five hundred housing units. So combined with Terre Linda, that'd be about five thousand four hundred new housing units. The demand for the expansion to downtown Centerfell would be about a hundred and forty-four acre feet for a total of nine hundred and ninety-four acre feet. The all the pipelines shown in the the image, plus the the portions that aren't shown connecting to the existing system would be about eight miles. And the district capital cost on that is estimated between twenty-five and forty million and a cost per dry year acre foot of twelve thousand to twenty thousand. So to summarize this one as well, the current and projected recycled water demands would be within the existing thousand acre feet of dry season capacity. And really, to just zoom out and look at all of these site types again, I'll kind of step through the table. We have the the current recycled water demand of seven hundred acre feet. The infill would be about ninety-four acre feet, recycled water projects of fifty-six acre feet. And then the expansion to downtown Centerfell of a hundred and forty-four, so a total of nine hundred and ninety-four acre feet. And it's within the existing treatment capacity.
So Nick, Paul, just on on costs, I think I probably ask you this every time we see these numbers. But at some point, the capital costs are paid off, right? These are so over what period are those cap? I mean, this cost per dry year acre foot, I don't know, after a hundred years, it'll really drop substantially over thirty years. What what's the period of payback that's included here?
So we we we've tried to analyze all of the water supplies on the same basis. And if you recall, with ARC being our project, pipeline lifespans are about a hundred years. And that's what we've tried to do here as well. So this this reflects the full cost of the project over the whole lifespan of the project. Maybe, in fact, maybe this is somewhat missing in some components. We haven't included, you know, extra treatment costs for this water. But those compared to these numbers, the the those, you know, almost don't show up.
And to just add to that too, Paul, another piece of this that kind of favors the the cost shown here are that this assumes that all of the housing units for Rena would be built on year one, which isn't likely. It it's more likely to be over ten, fifteen, twenty years that they're being constructed. So we're not even able to utilize that full demand until a few decades down the road.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is that the Golden Gate Bridge was sold on the basis of its bonds being paid off in like seventy-five. It was built in thirty-seven, and there would be no further tolls on the Golden Gate. It's, I wouldn't look for a windfall, you know, I haven't seen it in projects. The replacement and the maintenance seem to eat up that number, plus inflation. The dollars are less, you know, they the numbers are bigger, but the value is less. So you get that problem in addition, you know, which is probably halves the money every twenty-five years or twenty years or something like that. Double the price.
It's a challenging place to expand recycled water. As I said in the beginning, get the system that we have, which is twenty-five miles of pipe and seven hundred acre feet. There are some really creative moves that that had to be made, pushing and changing regulations in order to make that happen.
And users too.
Yeah.
Don't underestimate the users. Embassy Suites was a major player in this. They decided to Hilton decided to go ahead and take the reclaimed water. AutoCAD had it in, as I recall, in their lease, that if they didn't have reclaimed water in the building, they'd move. Now they moved anyway, but that was a a big factor. So there were a couple of players like that that I remember, and the Civic Center was also a major player in taking the water. I jumped on Ben the other day about Kaiser. I was up that end of town, and they were putting in new plants. And I was a little surprised, and Ben came back and said, I think that's on the reclaimed water. And it was, so able to back down.
Yeah, we we made a deal with them when they were remodeling the emergency facility. The old one, you know, up the hill, they were they're roundabout up there. They were remodeling some of those offices, and we're like, no, you guys need to put recycled water in there. It's really difficult here. How about, not this time, we'll do the irrigation, but we promise the next, you know, module, and they had Los Galinas, their big new facility as as a plan. And and so we were able to make sure that that was included.
I think it's important to recall too, that our treatment plant, which preceded Los Galinas' ability to recycle, we actually did shut our plant off in in the winter because it was too expensive to run.
Wh- which one?
We had a plant at right at the golf course.
Okay, okay.
The the tank, which we gave to Los Galinas, we built a seven million dollar tank up on the hill there, right above. Would be across the road from the golf course, right on that hill, by Smith Ranch.
Yeah, yeah.
Housing and but we had the problem of not enough demand to make it justified to run. It was even more expensive. So they would shut it off and substitute in freshwater and not not tell the users. So they they think they're getting reclaimed all the time, but they weren't. But the the quality of the the point of it, the quality of the reclaimed is so good that the user couldn't tell the difference, whether they were getting Russian River water or they were getting recycled water.
Yeah.
So and and that tank is still a critical part of the whole system because it's the chlorine contact tank for Los Galinas now, which the district kindly gave them and tore our plant down. Cool. Questions?
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. And it seems like the low hanging or the lowest hanging fruit in this operation is all going to be in the northern Centerfell area for that. And so it would be good to see, I mean, I know that the costs are a little bit high, but at some point, you know, not building stuff is a cost as well. And if we're able to get at some point a thousand acre feet a year from the system for outdoor landscape toilet flushes, that's a thousand acres. We don't get anywhere else too. I don't know if that price is included in that as well, because that demand's still going to be there. We would have to pay somewhere else, but now it's a little more expensive. So be interesting to see if that number offsets it significantly or not. But I think there's little wins. I think getting to the school out Luke's Valley Road is a big win, getting by Juvenal Hall, supporting those, getting those ready. And then the real big one after Northgate is going to be the Silvera property, St. Vincent's property. And that could be a couple thousand units, I think, total by it's all done, then throw on the Marinwood project across the way. And there's some big numbers coming in. I think we have some really big wins for. So be interesting to see if we sharpen the pencils and start looking at some of these projects, maybe not biting everything off at one time, but looking for areas where we can either set up where we know something's coming based on the movement of the Rena projects or somewhere that makes sense right now, like getting into the elementary school.
Thank you for the updates. Great.
Diana? Yeah, I have some kind of basic questions. I apologize for that. But how how are we defining demand? Because are are you defining demand in the context of what's available? Like what, given our capacity for treating this water now? Because it seems, given the potential possibilities of using recycled water, the demand could be kind of infinite. Are you saying, assuming we use all of our natural water sources first?
So typically, when we talk about demand in recycled water, we're actually replacing potable demand with recycled water. So we would look, for example, if we were thinking irrigation was the biggest use of demand, and we we might look at a park. You know, if they had a meter for a park, we'd look at that demand, go, wow, that's all irrigation, you know, thirty-five acre feet or so. If we brought recycled water there, that thirty-five acre feet goes to zero on the potable side, but we call it thirty-five acre feet of demand on the recycled water side.
Okay.
Yeah, I think not, it it's sort of replacing potable.
Okay. And then, I mean, what what kind, do you have a thought as to what kind of numbers you would want to see before you would say, you'd be saying to the board, I really think you should be considering this. Seems like we're not in the ballpark in terms of like direct and indirect potable reuse. Seems like we're not even in the ballpark right now. But wondered, have you thought about that at all? And what what might be kind of the next big thing that would really ratchet those numbers down in terms of just development out there? Not necessarily what's going on here, but what might make this less expensive?
I I think there's a lot of uncertainty around DPR. Certainly seems to be, you know, if you were looking at cost, this is now treated water augmentation. So I'm talking about going straight from the treatment plant through a tank and into the potable water system. I think we'd want to see some of the larger agencies push through the regulatory challenges associated with that level of treatment and technology that we would want to see operated and have some experience operating those facilities and to understand how they're able to manage some of the unforeseen challenges that pop up in projects like the Director Russell was talking about earlier down at Water Factory Twenty-One, an issue around NDMA popped up for them in drinking water levels that they just hadn't anticipated. So I think we need some operating experience in California to see how some of those IPR and DPR projects fall out.
So it sounds like your concerns are about a lot more than just cost, although I guess in some way that ultimately comes down to cost as well. Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks for the presentation. I guess I think about twenty twenty-one, when we didn't have a strategic plan for water supply and and meeting the needs of demand during drought. And although we're not Namibia, I think we feel like it at those times. And we did create a plan, and I think this board came in, or at least the three of us came in, with the idea that we need to implement some augmentation and some other ways to find water for our customers during really difficult times. And so then comparing numbers to Sonoma or other methods where we just get water from rain doesn't seem to make sense. This is an insurance policy during the real extreme times. And how expensive would that be when we don't have other sources of water? And I don't see that factored in. And I think when we came in, for me. for me anyway, it was really important for us to make some investments, to, to, to make the call and, and make some steps in the right direction. When you did the presentation, the last detailed one on recycled water, we looked at SASM in Mill Valley, which for some reason has dropped off, but it was the most affordable one. I think it was only $4 million in projected cost. May not have been the acre feet that we were looking for in terms of production and, and value, but it was doable and we had recycled water on Bayfront Park and, and on all those soccer fields. I understand the salinity issues, but it was working and we could fire that up again. I'm motivated to find some way to get us to keep, to get moving on this. We keep coming up with no's. We can't do Dsal. We can't do augmentation on dams and, and create more reservoir capacity. And now I'm seeing, I don't see a real viable project for recycled water. So just relying on rain as our only answer, I don't think satisfied at least what the grand jury came out and what we tried to put forward with our strategic water supply assessment. So I'm hoping that after your 20 years in doing this job, that we can find another answer besides the ARC project.
Yeah, I, there, there's been, I, I think some thoughtful board comments following this presentation. And it, it is not, staff has no preference of which water supply projects to move forward. And through the strategic water supply assessment, we tried to bring to the board kind of a common denominator from a staff standpoint of dollar per acre foot. It's certainly within policy discretion of a board to look at some intrinsic value of recycling in certain ways and discount in some way, or add to the scale of certain projects. If there's a preference or you, as a policy matter, you don't want to strictly look at it on a dollar per acre foot. And we can revisit that discussion in context of the options and where we've landed. I think a another piece of the discussion that we would bring in is from Finance or Brett, where there's limited capital dollars as well. So thinking about a small recycled water project, okay, it's a high dollar per acre foot. Let's just do it. We're maybe using $30 million of our capital ability, which right, for any business, as you know, is limited, including in the public sector. So there's just considerations we have to look at, but I think it is worthwhile, based on the comments I've heard, to take a look at this and understand what would some of these small recycle projects really look like? What would they mean financially? And certainly there's no question at the end of the day, these are policy decisions. So it's not really kind of when staff would bring the recommendation to go forward. It's the understanding that staff's job is really to look at it in a technical and financial basis, which is what we've kind of done, where we bring the kind of order of projects. But there's certainly other ways to look at it as well. So we're happy to revisit it.
We ran a system for Auberge in Napa Valley. And one day they came to us and said, we want more reclaimed water. They're using all of their effluent for reclaimed water. So there was no more reclaimed water unless they used more water, they couldn't get more water. But they didn't understand that, even with us in their face all the time, talking to them. They didn't understand that they generate the wastewater. So it's a loop, right? And we're using a hundred percent of the reclaim. I thought that was always interesting about them. The basis of thinking in the water business in California is based on Henry Ongut's philosophy, which was the highest quality source water is used for the highest quality need. That's kind of the background of the Health Department's approach to water. Dsal was a way around these standards. So Dsal, while it may seem like it's different, it actually is the same thing. It, it's a form of DPR where you take a degraded water quality. In that case, mostly due to salt, but also due to sewage discharges. There's 32 discharges between Sacramento and Contra Costa Waters intake sewage discharges. And if you come down further, it's more. So you get into a situation where it gets a little tricky. Dsal, as I said, was a way around all this. The Dsal, you could take the salt, squeeze the water out and then put the water directly in the main. And I don't think the district ever said that, but that was clearly what their thinking was, with his, I could tell. Which was a good idea from that standpoint. It's just unfortunate the costs are a little heavy. One thing that George Javonagus and I have been talking about is he really likes the term purified water for the reclaimed. If you'll note, like, if you go to a casino and you get a bottle of water, it'll say purified water, whatever that means. Not clear what that means exactly, but that's something he's suggesting. The other thing I'm going to bring up again, which I have harped on since I've joined the board, is that one of the problems of the distribution of the pipe, the water is the pipe. If we were to put the purple pipe in place with our open excavations when we replace mains. And what I would propose we do is hook that pipe up to the fire hydrants. So that when, if ever it comes, there's, you just switch it over and the fire hydrants stay on the reclaimed water. And, you know, I, I don't know what the Health Department's doing right now about separation. I don't know how they're considering that water, if it's, if it's like sewage to them, which requires a 10-foot separation. But there are some issues of the width of the trench. In essence, you could put the, I believe you could put the pipe right next to the, to the water main. It wouldn't make any difference. But that's something I think we should really look at because we'll always be faced with the problem that you're talking about, which is the capital cost hit. Unless we piece it in. And there are these areas where it's more desirable. SASM would be one. We're doing pipeline work down there. Putting the purple pipe in place might be a good thing there. I think that we should promote the two car washes. The Union 76 and Shell Station off at Northgate are the two that I'm aware of that have reclaimed water. I only wash cars at those, one of those two stations. So I think the district should push it a little harder on those car washes. And oh, the other one, I can read my own writing, is the Meadow Club is extremely interested in this water. And they've been striking out, as best I can tell, in every direction they've gone. But I think that that's, they're still interested in, in participating. And I think they have a, a good project. The problem is their elevation and their location. They're not near us. They are near part of Ross Valley, but it would require a separate treatment plant, which we actually proposed to them by company, putting in a separate treatment plant to get the water from the sewer, take it direct. They felt they wanted to bring it up the hill. It's just a different approach, a little more complicated than that. But anyway, those guys, Peacock Gap you mentioned. And, and the important part of your point, Ranjiv, is that reclaimed water is in a sense, one and done. So you may spend a lot of money getting it, but once you got it, it's the gift that keeps on giving. So it's there forever to use. And if you don't have it, you can never use it. So you need to have the infrastructure there to be able to use it. And once you put the money into it, then you can use it.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, that's part of what I'm concerned about is that it's always being produced, even when we don't need it. So it's a bit like having your car running right now while we're sitting here. Until the, you know, I, I, I think there will be, and it could be fairly soon, technological advances in treatment that make it easier to turn them off. When that's the case for places with intermittent shortages, it's going to make a lot more sense. That's mo- that's more of my concern.
Perhaps. I, several dynamics unfortunately drives the boat. And I don't see that coming in the, in what I could see in the future. I don't see a quantum change in the cost of treatment. One of the problems is the Health Department rightfully is very conservative. And Paul kind of skipped over the, the little details. You know, you're right about the larger districts, but one of the proposals that Javonagus and I have been talking about is, you know, if you want seven ROs in a row, put seven ROs in a row. The last six do nothing. And they'll, they'll run a long time because there's very little loss. There's energy loss, but there's not much degradation of the membranes over time. So, you know, that is just redundancy of just in case belt and suspenders, belt and suspenders, belt and suspenders. It's hard to know. You'll see especially the water folks dragging their feet on accepting DPR. You know, even though the regs allow it and they politic it through the Water Reuse Association. We said, what's holding up this advancement? And they had the Health Department sat down with them and had them list out the six things or whatever there were. And then the Water District, including ours, Water Districts funded these studies. So they answered these questions that the Health Department was dragging their feet on. And basically pulled the rug out from under the Health Department at that point, who would just say, well, it's too complicated. It's too expensive to find out. So that was December of 23, as I recall. And, you know, I don't think anything's happened in the industry that I'm aware of since that time. San Diego is the only one that's kind of kicking around. But it's, it's, it's complicated because of the public pushback.
Largely driven by need.
Yeah, but Larry, I think you touched on another important topic. You know, if we looked at this from a dollars and cents thing, when this plant was first built, Los Galinas, when the $7 million tank was built with a lower demand, what was the cost per acre foot? But we're enjoying that benefit today from the investment from years past. And I think we should continue that mindset with this, with recycled water, especially the expansion, what we currently have.
Good point. Okay, public comment?
Yes, Phil Sauter.
Thanks for the presentation. It was great to see the various options for using recycled water and what other water districts around the world are doing. I also appreciate the comparison between recycled water options and the option to aug- augment surface water. I was pleasantly surprised to see an annual yield of nearly 8,000 acre feet. It seemed like we'd have to go outside our service area to get that much extra water. And this seems to open up some additional local options. I was surprised to see the low figures for recycled water demand, which top out at 1,000 acre feet a year. But the High User Report at last month's Planning Committee meeting indicated that our top 5,000 super users are currently using 3,600 acre feet primarily for landscaping. While Tiburon is a, a long pipeline away, the super users in the other clustered areas seem like they might be good customers for a drought-proofed source of outdoor water. Some of them already truck in landscape water during drought years and they might be happy to turn on a purple pipe offered by Marin Water. In the meantime, perhaps we could sell recycled water to the companies that are currently trucking it around to our customers. Comparing the various costs of recycled water was also an interesting exercise. The current rate for recycled water, no matter how much someone uses, is 543 per CCF or seven tenths of a cent per gallon. The cheapest tier one customer could pay for potable water is 767 per CCF or a penny a gallon. And the most expensive rate a tier four customer could pay is 2477 per CCF or 3.3 cents a gallon. So recycled water, if it's available in a customer's area, is a real bargain. Costs per acre foot for the Terre Lynde and San Rafael recycled water options ranging from 12,000 to 20,000 per dry year acre foot indicate a cost between 3.7 cents and 6.1 cents a gallon. I'm not sure why there's such a big difference between the price we're charging now for recycled water and what the new projects would cost us. Probably piping and, and, and that takes a, you know, needs a closer look. But it's clear that those who are currently using recycled water are getting a deal. Of course, there's no reason that recycled water has to be cheap if it allows those with large lawns to keep them green, even in the driest years. As we look at rates, we might want to up what we're charging for recycled water. I'm glad we're taking a dive into recycled water as one of our sources of new water supply. It's an option that's right here in our service area and could offer not only a more reliable source of supply, but also a more reliable source of revenue. Thank you to staff and to the board members who have stayed on top of this important subject and provided such helpful information.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Menakis, please.
Director Russell, you brought up something about the difficulty of getting water to the Meadow Club, the infrastructure. But I'm curious, is there a health and safety reason that water can't be pulled directly from the reservoir, which is right there, to the Meadow Club with minimal filtering and have them use raw water right there on the golf greens? It seems, there may be lots of reasons it can't be done, but it seems like that might be something worth looking at. Thank you.
I think that's what we currently do.
Just, just raw water? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it was also true of the other golf course, the one they closed. They got the raw water too.
Right. And then I wonder with, with Peacock Gap, we have a quarry right there. And if I understand correctly, there is water there.
Saltwater.
Oh, it's saltwater. Okay, thank you.
It's communicating directly with the bay.
Appreciate it.
Fair enough for other speakers.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Diana, you got a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments from responding to what Director Smith said, which Director Smith, I share your, I'm kind of getting antsy wanting to see. This is really where I thought our long-term, quote unquote, long-term solution would lie. And I will say after just nine months on the board, I'm really learning what a how scrutinized everything we do is. And, and I, I think because in a lot of ways, this is still an untested area. I can just see the, us rolling this out and then having these problems arise and then, you know, and then the kind of outcry in addition to the fact that I think people still have a lot of bias against recycling water for drinking and things like that. I guess, so I just, I'm trying to be mindful of both, both of those things. And I think for me, I guess where I'm coming down on this, because I really do want to keep pushing this forward, is to try to just learn everything I can about this and really follow every place that's doing this. And what is working and what is driving costs down? So to the extent, Paul, that, you know, you'd be willing to kind of keep us in the loop on that as well, just on a regular basis, that would be great. I do try to read whatever I can, but I'd love it if we could be kind of out in the forefront in terms of getting this going. And also realize that, you know, this is at, one of the thoughts that I had was, is there a possibility at some point to do a referendum or do a bond or something where the public would be involved in weighing in on this? So they can't say, see, we told you so. So I don't know, just putting that out there. Thanks.
Interesting comment. This district led the approach to reclaimed water. When Bob Castle was, I, I guess, kind of in your job, I don't quite know what Bob Castle's job was. But they, the Water District pushed forward quickly in, in part response to water demand. Now, remember, there's a lot of things happening here that we didn't go up to Russian River at the beginning. And this kind of integrates in with that. It's a way of trying to get more water source. The reclaimed water is a beautiful source because you generate it as wastewater and you pick it back up and reclaim it. So it's an interesting concept. It's always available, even in the middle of droughts, you're going to have flow and sewage plants. So it, it's, it's an attractive one. The problem though, as you correctly point out, and you only talked about one half of the pushback. You talked about the public pushback. You've got regulatory pushback. Our staff is excellent at dealing with the Health Department, but they don't come and complain to us about what happens. But I know from running numerous plants that the Health Department can be a handful. There's a DDW, Division of Drinking Water, is a handful to deal with. And it's just constant. And the more reclaimed you get, the more DDW you get. So that, I guess, is a whole nother side that, you know, you're talking about the PR side, which is important. But the other side of it is the regulatory side, which is the But the other side of it is the regulatory side, which is the cops. And the cops are a handful to deal with. Okay, well, cool. Thank you very much. And let's plan on an update on this as time goes by, you know?
Yeah, we'll do that. And I do want to, um, think about it because, you know, it's like, uh, Groundhog Day almost. And how do we move past that? And because Larry talked about, right, initially, the entire time he's been on the board, he's seen this master plan. And you saw on an early slide, Paul showed all the times we've brought updated studies to the board. For the most part, those updates have come at the request of the board, feeling similar interests that we're feeling today and showing the costs and the board not deciding to move forward with the project. So, um, we're, we're game to do it and we do rack our brains at times trying to think, what are we missing? What can we bring that's relatively attractive, understanding the community and board interest? So we want to support the board with that interest and we want to move these forward to the extent it makes sense to the ultimate decision makers, which is you.
Yeah, I, I jumped up and down when I joined the board about exactly this issue. And, um, and it's your folks, San Rafael. What I understand, I've never had a confrontation with them about it, but what I understand is they told us basically, stop digging up their streets. They're tired of us being in their streets, putting in reclaimed water pipes. That may be a overexaggeration, but that's what I recall, the discussion. And, uh, it terminates now like at Third and D or something like that, the pipe somewhere up that way.
Go that far?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It comes into town. Yeah. And then, and then we, then we started getting pushback on, on digging up the streets, as I understood it.
Gotcha. One comment. In terms of when staff brings something back, every time it's come back, it's these really big projects. Is there an opportunity to bring back smaller little things in the current distribution center that will start getting a little bit of wins as opposed to a magic bullet or silver bullet for this?
Yeah, and there was an interesting comment, um, today of, and we've talked about it a bit. And maybe we need to look at it harder as we're doing routine pipeline replacement projects. What's the marginal increase in cost to put a recycled line in that? That over time brings that big cost down because we've slowly chipped away at that capital pipeline cost with our routine replacements. But, you, you know, you can say, well, yeah, but we could end up not doing and have stranded assets. But anyway, it's, it's a good discussion. I think there are some.
Well, at some point it'd be interesting to see where the discussion went because for our pipeline replacement projects, there's a box to check that says close to a recycled water line or not. And it's always no, 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 no. Well, it's always going to be no if we don't keep moving it forward, so.
Well, it, it's even worse than that. The shopping center on Sir Francis Drake, the one across from the ferry terminal, is dual-plumped. Pending reclaimed water coming to them. I think what they envisioned, I never spoke to anybody about this, but I presume what they thought about was CSMA is around the corner. So they would bring the water in from CSMA and then the water was too salty. I think originally the plan was they were going to try and bring it in without treatment. You know, basically just take the treated wastewater treatment, but no real water treatment. Bring it up and feed into the shopping center. So, you know, the shopping center hasn't kicked too hard. We've heard, we had kicks from that area about some of the vacant lots that are being developed, about the cost of dual plumbing. It's about, for the one project I remember was a couple hundred grand. And they said, look, you know, uh, why are we doing this? You, you can't get the water to us. You're not going to get the water to us. Why are you making us do this? So it, it's, it's a sticky one. And it's exactly what Ben's talking about, you know? It's the chicken and the egg. When do you say, okay, we're going to do this as a philosophical, philosophical approach? And try to lower those long-term costs. The other thing, you, you mentioned the cost, but the other side of it's the disruption. You know, if you're in the ground and you put that second pipeline in, and then you say, okay, it's there, right? And we don't have to tear you up again to put it in. Maybe I'm overly sensitive to San Rafael's complaining, but San Rafael, as I recall, really complained about this because they felt they were the center of this whole thing. And, you know, and, and it's justified in, in part at least. So anyway, enough of that. Thank you for your patience, Brett. ERP.
No problem. And yes, switching gears here quite a bit. Going to talk a little bit about our ERP, which is our enterprise-wide software that is used by all of our divisions here. Primarily in finance, but in many other areas as well. And so we're bringing this item sheet today to give you a little update on the project. I know we've been back about every quarter for the past year, so hopefully there's no big surprises here. We are going to give you a little bit of an update here on our modernization efforts. Kind of a couple of slight shifts in the timeline, but nothing major. Um, and then we're going to talk about the use of our third-party tools and Brad will go more into that as we get there. Third-party tools are basically just little enhancements and little add-ons that are not SAP native or not SAP's product themselves, but we use them to make SAP easier to use. Um, and then we have a specific proposal here from a company called Synactive that Brad will go over. And that'll come back to a regularly scheduled board meeting. But, um, before I take all of Brad's thunder here, uh, my name is Brett Upandam, the Finance Director. I have with me Brad Taylor, uh, the District's IT Manager. We also have in the audience Raj Kowal, who is our Project Manager for the ERP Modernization Project. Um, and so without further ado, I'll kick it over here to Brad to give us an update here.
So, good morning, members of the board. Brad Taylor, Information Technology Manager. First of all, we'll just go through kind of an update of where we are with our ERP Modernization Project. Um, as you may recall, we started with basically, um, what we're calling Phase Zero, which is really focused on our HR systems, payroll, time entry, benefits management, and also, um, employee self-service. We were able to procure the software for the SuccessFactors subscription for the SuccessFactors platform, a five-year subscription. Thank you for that. We've actually already deployed our environments for both development, testing and production. Um, so we have our infrastructure up and running. RFP was awarded early this year to a systems integrator, uh, business, a Phoenix Business Consulting Services. And we actually kicked off that project on April 1st of this year. So we're five months in, just about. And, um, we are still on track for a go-live targeting the first payroll period in 2026 to be on the SuccessFactors platform. A little update on the, on the Phoenix, um, project. We, um, have already gone through our first and second iterations. And so the methodology that they employ is an iterative approach. We're going to go through a total of three iterations before the project is over. Multiple tracks are focused on the various functions that we're modernizing across the various cross-functional teams. And in terms of next steps, um, as soon as we wrap up Iteration 2, which is ongoing right now, uh, we'll see Iteration 3 in a September, October timeframe. And, uh, we'll basically be making a kind of a go-no-go decision in, in mid-October as to whether or not we're going to be able to meet the, uh, the early 2000, 2026 timeline.
Is this Phoenix reference like the bird, when it burns up and?
It is, yes, it is the bird and the, and the city, I think, as well, so.
Okay.
So this, this timeline shows graphically kind of where we are. The little red arrow there is our current, our current, you know, point in time. We actually, while we're meeting here, there's a meeting going on over in the Corporation Yard to kick off Phase 1 of the ERP Modernization Project. So we're actually beginning that with a engagement with an organization known as GFOA to basically gather requirements and build an RFP for the next phase of the, of the project. That next page is, phase is going to be focused on utility billing and customer service. So it's going to be implementation of a platform known as CX, SAP CX Platform Customer Experience. So it would cover, um, you know, all, all the functions that customer service uses SAP for now. Um, in addition to integrating with, with our meter shop and AMI potentially in the future. So let's, oh.
Brad, just to confirm the point, we've spoken in the past about the need to have the ERP, um, updates in place in order to implement AMI. So it sounds like it's really going to be Phase 1 that is important for bringing on AMI successfully.
Yeah. And in parallel to our RFP for the SAP implementation, Craig is continuing his efforts and an RFP for the AMI implementation as well. So there's a lot of crossover, certainly a lot of integration that we're looking at and keeping in, in, in mind when we go forward with these projects.
Just, uh, Ben, checking, will we be getting an update on the AMI RFP and the results of that, that RFP?
Yes, there, there'll be, um, probably a number of updates as we get that, uh, well in advance of kind of decision-making for the board and award of contracts. So we will be doing that.
Great.
The question I was going to ask is, I assume other water districts are using SAP?
Yes.
And so like the billing things are, I mean, we use a outside vendor for the billing, right?
We, we process our meter reads and we generate our billing in SAP. We have an external third-party provider who actually prints those bills. Um, and then we also just recently implemented a payment provider, third-party paymentist to actually process customer payments.
But the software actually came from SAP?
Um, yes, the.
To generate that.
The source, yeah.
Just of the bill.
Yeah. And then, of course, we, we handle all of our accounts receivable in SAP and postings to the finance, financial systems. So, um, want to introduce a, a, a key partner in our SAP implementation, a company called Synactive. Uh, they have a tool called GUI XT that really was originated right around the time that we implemented SAP here at the district. It was a tool which sort of fixed some of the deficiencies of SAP in terms of its ease of use, provided opportunities for automation. Um, and we've actually been leveraging this Synactive tool since the early 2000s. So it almost was implemented right around the same time that we adopted SAP as a platform.
I'll inform the board too, that, um, they may remember the county tried to implement SAP and couldn't. We offered to help the county and they turned our help down.
Oh.
Unbelievable. You know, we had a successful running system and the county failed completely. I forget how much they spent, but it was a bundle, like 40 million or something like that. Failed.
Yep. And I think ended up in a lawsuit ultimately, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, GUI XT is probably not the only reason that SAP was a success here at, here at the district, but it certainly helped quite a bit. It is so tightly integrated with the SAP, uh, infinite platform that you can't even tell when you're using SAP versus GUI XT.
What is it?
It's really a, it's a, it's a client, it's a tool to basically simplify the interfaces. Yeah. So I had an example, I have an example that, uh, that we use quite a lot to talk about GUI XT. There's a certain transaction in SAP that literally takes you through 25 screens. And it's, you know, very easy. Human error is, you know, a real thing to make an error in that entry. And if you have, make an error in any of those 25 screens, you have to start over. GUI XT is a tool that allows us to consolidate all of those different screens and to simplify the interface and basically break that down into a single screen with a minimum number of fields and validation that helps you, you know, correct any errors before you submit the transaction. So it's just an example of, one example of kind of how GUI XT helps us. We literally have thousands of GUI XT scripts that we use every day here at the district. Not only does it.
I think SAP has bought them.
Um, SAP has their own answer to
I see.
the interface issues. It's called Fiori.
Right.
Yes, potentially. Uh, but interestingly enough, the GUI XT tool literally is, is on the menus of the SAP native client. So it's, it's that tightly integrated. It's used across the, the organization, as I mentioned here, um, operations, meter shop. And any of our, any time we're interacting with work orders and entering time for work orders, we're using GUI XT. So the GUI XT platform is actually going to be end of life this year in December of 2025. It's not, it's, it's not, it's still going to be supported, but we're not going to be receiving any new updates and they're not going to be patching the system. The payroll and HR implementations that we're taking on with Phase 0 actually gave us an opportunity to repurpose some of these GUI XT scripts specifically for entry of time and for working with work orders. So the new platform that Synactive is selling is called Liquid UI. Um, we actually already have a Liquid UI implementation in place, uh, here at the district. And we're actually using it right now for a warehouse automation project.
Is that Louis?
It's not Louis.
Not yet.
I mean, I guess.
It's coming. I mean, you can see it.
Liquid UI.
UI, huh? LUI.
I will mention that to our Synactive. We'll give you credit for sure. So the proposal that's before us right now is we have over 3,000 scripts that really need to be evaluated and migrated to the new platform. Uh, we've actually already, uh, performed a kind of a automated, uh, test migration. And about 75% of those scripts will automatically migrate to the new platform. Uh, the remainder really are going to require some manual intervention. And this is actual developer time to, uh, to, to modify those scripts. If you want to see a detailed cost in the proposal, we have the script conversion process. That's just a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of developer hours to develop, to, to migrate the remaining scripts so it doesn't convert automatically. And then we are also proposing to, um, integrate SuccessFactors in our new EC time, Employee Central Time System, uh, with Liquid UI. And that's, that's the second line item there. And then lastly, we sort of added a project contingency of 10% or so. So we've, uh, we've worked out the scope of a work with Synactive. Uh, we have a, um, couple of miscellaneous agreements that cover this engagement. Um, and we can bring you the, bring those to the board when they are finalized.
So that wraps up the presentation today. We just wanted to again, give the board an update on where we're at with our current, um, efforts in the payroll system. Um, and, and also give a little peek under the hood for kind of what goes on behind the scenes with these scripts. And we are, like, as Brad mentioned, we are still, um, finalizing the contract with Synactive for Liquid UI. And that would come to the future board meeting, um, for full approval. Happy to take any questions.
Will these be pretty user-friendly, easy for the staff to figure out? I've seen havoc ensue sometimes when new software is incorporated in a entity.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of the Liquid UI scripts, um, basically turn a screen that looks like something you'd see on a mainframe with thousands and hundreds of fields and tabs and various other sub-interfaces to just a single screen, uh, with graphic, you know, elements, uh, buttons to basically perform different actions. So, yeah.
My kind of screen.
They're definitely, definitely, it makes, it makes a big difference, yeah. I mean, SAP was, I think, founded in 1972 and is really not known for its, uh, ease of use or user friendliness.
And founded the county, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Just to thank you for the update, uh, this is a ton of work. So Brett, Brad, thank you for the update and moving it forward. And even more impressive that we're staying pretty close to timelines, so.
Brad, just basic question, you know, I'm, I'm surprised, maybe building on Diana's question, that some of these scripts are not already integrated. Is it because we have so many specific, you know, every agency has its own specific functions, operational requirements, ways of doing things that they have to be so customized?
They are customized. We had a, um, a particular resource in-house, a BSA who actually wrote many of these scripts. And, um, you know, like, again, there's, there's a, the big benefit obviously was improving ease of use, improving accuracy and efficiency. The primary driver for converting all these is, is to re-platform, is to go from the, the older GUI XT platform to the newer Liquid UI platform. Uh, we are going to, as part of that process, see what we can do to maybe rationalize some of the scripts. It may be that, you know, 200 or 300 of those scripts could be combined into one, uh, with some additional dialogues, you know, or additional prompts. Because clearly the scripts we have now are very customized to very specific actions and very specific users throughout the district. So we are going to do what we can to kind of see what we can do to reduce that in the, in the migration process.
I remember Hershey's candy depended on SAP. And one year they had no candy for Halloween. Because of a little glitch in the system. Um, I think the important part here is that, you know, our guys are familiar. I think you're expert here in terms of SAP implementation, which is a, a big reason, obviously, you observed and pushed to get SAP back because it's, they're used to it. And that's exciting about the whole thing, you know? It's not bringing in another enterprise group.
Yeah.
Although I'm sure Oracle would love to be here, but that's how it goes. Public comment?
There are none.
Okay, great. Well, with that, our next meeting is in September. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
September 23rd at 9:30 AM. Thank you all.